Thank you, everyone. And thank you for joining us tonight. I know that weather is getting bad out there. That thunder is roaring. But we are here and we are happy to see your faces with us tonight. So the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Tuesday, September the 10th, 2019. The time is now 7:01 PM. Board Trustees present are Winford Adams Jr., Chris Bell, Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jana Gonzalez, Dawn Davis, and myself, Rodney Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence your cell phones or any electronic devices that you may have at this time, please. Thank you. Tonight, the presentation of the colors will be led by Mustang Army JROTC Battalion. And I'd like to introduce Captain Dawn Davis to introduce our JROTC battalion.
Captain Davis. My colleagues, my leadership team, and our community. I'm proud tonight to present to you the Westfield Mustang JROTC Battalion under command by Battalion Commander Vivian Garcia. The Westfield Mustang Battalion hosted drill camp from June 11th through 14th, 2019, in which they went over basic of drills, color guard, and exhibition. It can't provide more instructions and leadership in order for the battalion to be successful in 2019 and 2020 school year. In addition, the Westfield Army Geology Program attended freshman orientation where they encouraged upcoming freshmen to join the battalion and become great citizens of our community. The U.S. and the Texas flag, led tonight by Cadet Private First Class Officer Vasquez. The color guard commander, carrying the American flag, Italian commander Vivian Garcia. Cabinet Texas flag is Sergeant Tenzio Miles. US Executive Officer is Fabio Teneras. Texas flag guard is Corporal Daniel Vega. The Westfield JROTC color guard and program is under the instructions of Major Charles Artomas and First Sergeant Carlos Jackson. At this time, everyone, please rise. And remain standing.
Present, arms.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Order, arms. Outward, face. Other guard, hold. Arms. Present, arms. Order, arms. Outward, face.
Thank you to our students. At this time, I would like to ask if everyone would just take a moment and observe today in your own way, a moment of silence. Okay, we do have some empty seats up front and we don't want anyone, don't want anyone standing up, so please feel free or welcome as they come in to, please ask them to come up to the front and have a seat. We promise we won't bite. Thank you. Our next item is the superintendent's remarks. So at this time, I'd like to recognize our superintendent, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and other trustees. I'm glad to have you all back here for our September board meeting. This Saturday, if you have on your calendars, is our Student Success Walk that we do every year. And we're holding our annual success walk with a special kickoff at Westfield High School starting at 9 o'clock AM. This event is important because we're going out into the community once again to find those students who've not yet shown up for the new school year, who are having difficulties with attendance. It's also sending a message to everyone that we really do care about attendance and that attendance does matter. We spend a lot of time in the district focusing and talking about attendance, and this is one way to really emphasize the work that we're doing this year. We know that students can't learn if they're not in school, so it was very critical for us to be able to have them here with us. When we were looking at our numbers for this year, right now, we're about 99.8% of our projected enrollment, which represent our totals this year to be 35,308 students. At the high school level, we're at 101% of our projected, which means that we're over the projected amount of students that we thought. At the middle school, we're at 98.2%. At the elementary level, we're at 99.8%. And so I think we're doing well based upon the percentages that we have. Our goal is to make sure those kids are here every single day. In addition to that, we want to talk a little bit about our integrated mobile app that we shared a little bit on last Thursday. Speaking about attendance, we want to mention that we're changing how we do attendance calls to our parents at the high school level. We are now calling first thing in the morning after the first period, in addition to an evening phone call. We're hoping that if a student overslept, we can reach the parent early enough that we can have a chance of getting that student back at school. We understand that every moment counts in the classroom, and we're hoping that this little change will let the parents know that their child isn't there versus getting that call in the evening. In addition, I'd like to recommend that all of our parents download our new integrated mobile app so they can see their student's attendance, but also the grades and assignments as well that we talked about last Thursday. Once again, it's a great way for us to stay in touch with our community, most importantly, our families. Wanted to let you know that we are having our annual ribbon cutting ceremony for our new teach-up facility off of Hive 45 in Ritchie. So please join us on Monday, September the 23rd at 5:30 PM, where we hope that we can show off that building and show the vision that we have for improving student achievement by providing relevant and engaging professional development. We've already had our first district-wide PD day in the building, and we're off to a great start. We also had our administrators' PD day as well on August 30th, and the principals participated in a full day of training as well. We're very fortunate to be able to have such a magnificent building. If you remember when we had the discussion about whether or not we should buy it, it's really serving its purpose, so thank you so much for your leadership in helping us obtain that building. Also, I want to mention our annual night out program, our National Night Out Program. We want to mention that our police department's annual night out is coming. This year, it's going to be held on October 1st at Westfield High School from 5:00 to 7:30 PM. This is also another wonderful way our community can gather together and help our officers build relationships with people that we serve within our community. Over the summer, we saw in our new police chief, Ken Culberth, who's sitting over on the end, so I know that he's also looking forward to the opportunity to meet as many families as possible within our community. So please mark your calendars, October 1st will be the date that we'll have that event. We also have had a great football season, as I'm sure you can see. Finally, we want to take a moment to applaud all three of our high schools' football teams. Decane, Westfield, and Spring are undefeated this season with two games each under their belts, and it's a great way to start off the season, and we're looking forward to a great year. Later this month, we'll see our teams play each other, so it will be interesting to see what happens. And so even if you're not a big football fan, we encourage everyone to come out to the games. This may be the year that we get a ring yet, so we'll see. Last but not least, I did tell you last Thursday that I wanted to recognize some of our principals who have made some extraordinary growth within the buildings. Before I do that, we have our new leader for transportation here with us this evening, Mr. Jack Mann. Will you please stand and be recognized? Mr. Mann comes to us from Aldine ISD as the Director of Transportation, so as you know, my friend is a little upset with me, but we're very happy to have Mr. Mann here, a part of our transportation department, so welcome to Spring ISD. Next, but not least, we'd like to recognize some new principals that we have in the district. Cooper Elementary Principal, please stand, Myra Garcia. Myra's coming to us from Clotton Middle School as the Associate Principal. At Hoyland Elementary School, we have Alisa Cole. Alisa comes to Hoyland as the Assistant Principal at Clark Intermediate. We have no stranger, and he's probably gonna say, "Why are you having me stand up?" He's going back to the schools at Marshall Elementary, Mike Walker. New to us at Bailey Middle School is Chandra Brown, coming to us from the Dallas-Fort Worth Wells Middle School, a familiar face, Christine Guidry, coming from Spring Early College in Wenchey. Do-It Middle School, an all-time favorite, Stacy Rogers from Spring High School. She's actually back at Do-It, where she taught there for several years. In addition to that, we have several campuses that we'd like to recognize for great growth in academics this past year. We'd like to ask Yvette Casas from Burchett Elementary, she grew six percentage points in her student achievement. You all can stand just a little longer. You pop up and you pop down. Okay, thank you. At Heritage Elementary, we're gonna celebrate two principals. If you remember, the building was split throughout the year, so Heritage Elementary had 15 percentage point gains, so we'd like to ask Dr. H.P. and Trent Russell to please stand and be recognized. Lewis Elementary had two percentage point gains, Grace Leal. Link Elementary School had 24 percentage points gained, Justin Jones. Marshall Elementary had 11 percentage points gains, and we had Debra Broaden. She's not with us, but we have Mike Walker, who's the new principal, so Mike, you can McNabb Elementary School, 15 percentage points gains, Melissa Warford. Robertson Middle School, seven percentage points gains, Tracy Walker. She's not here with us this evening. Wenchey High School, nine percentage points gains, Dr. Andrea Scher. Decane High School, 10 percentage point gains, Alonso Reynolds III. And Spring High School, seven percentage points gains, Diakam Menendez. We also want to say a very special thank you for the leadership of all of our principals, but then also the principals who also was rated an A by the Texas Education Agency. At this time, we'd like to have Melissa Warford stand up for McNabb Elementary School. Once again, Ms. Tracy Walker's not with us this evening, but let's give a warm welcome and applause for Robertson. Diana Kimberly at Spring Early College. And then, last but not least, Andrea Scher again at Wenchey High School. So once again, we're definitely proud and thankful for all of our leaders that we have. We know that they work tirelessly, day in and day out, and so from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate all of you and all that you do, and this concludes my report for today.
Exciting, beautiful, and very appreciative report, Dr. Watson. We were happy to see all of our new principals here of the improvement in the schools, and we're just excited about 2019, 2020 approaching, and the wonderful job that all of you principals will do for our students in Spring ISD. Again, thank you for your help, your hard times, your long hours working with our students to all of the principals. And I know my board members have some comments that they would like to make, so I'll begin.
So I had an opportunity this past week to tour several of the schools I was assigned to, and so I will say that the thing that I noticed as I walked through the hallways with Dr. Watson was implementation of the Spring Way is much, much, much better than it was when I did this tour last year. We had threshold happening in all the hallways, and it looked, so I can tell when threshold is not authentic. You can tell by the way the kids respond.
Mr. Evans, could you explain threshold to some people?
Threshold is, so I have a room full of principals, so they all know. Threshold is basically greeting every child as they come through the doorway in your classroom. It's a very, I believe, a very important part of classroom management. It's one of the ways I used it, was you get to look in the kid's eye, you can tell if everything's okay, if they're ready to come in and get to work, or if they're not. And so I saw that happening in campuses where it was not authentic when we toured the campuses last year. This year, it definitely is authentic. I saw the board configurations in every classroom as if Dr. Watson had gone in and done them himself. Just very impressed with the implementation, and I know that that's gonna have a huge impact on our student achievement and closing our gaps and doing the things that we need to do. So I want to thank all the principals out there for making sure that we are executing Spring Way.
Thanks, everyone, for being here this evening. I just left the meeting that was actually starting, Representative Jarvis Johnson, who was giving a legislative update, and I just want to point out, for those who don't know, this last legislative session was very busy for public education. We got a lot of good things passed and some things that we are tasked with implementing, so if you run across any of your state legislators, mostly those who serve us, and we have a handful, thank them for taking a step for public education.
I'd like to thank, once again, our community for supporting our bond, because now that we get to see the buildings that are up and how they support education, it is a very amazing experience for me to go into those schools. We all want student achievement, but there's many, many factors that go into that, and the money we have been able to put in our schools to upgrade facilities, to make them safe, to make them healthy, and also to make them, as I say, support instruction. I think I want to compliment our team. Mr. Miranda, I know that you and your department have just handled so many things simultaneously that I am just amazed, and I certainly hope that our public gets to visit some of our schools and see what's going on and how we're supporting instruction.
I wanted to elaborate on Dr. Watson's invitation to our success walk on Saturday. I'm really excited. It's one of my favorite events of the year. Last year, we went to a home of a student that hadn't come back, and then when we got there, they looked out and they saw board members and community members and the principal on the front porch, and this mom, and we said, "We're here looking for your son. We want him back. Where is he?" She just had tears in her eyes. She went and got him out of bed, and he came and he didn't look very enthused about coming back to school, but the mother, but by the time we got through speaking with him, he was just nodding, but I didn't think we were gonna see him. At the end of the day, when I was pulling out the parking lot, I saw him walking in the building to come back and register, and that's what it's about. It's about reaching every kid and making sure that we don't lose them along the way, and just taking a morning to dedicate a little bit of your time to make a difference in a child's life. So I'd like to invite you to come out, it's Westfield this year, at 9:00 AM on Saturday, so we can go out and get our kids. Thank you.
And just for clarification, Trustee Durant and Dr. Watson, can the community participate in this as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, yes.
Want to talk a little about how schools are supporting that?
Mr. Bell and members of the board, we definitely want to invite the community. Each school has a captain right now that has been coordinating and securing volunteers, so any volunteers from the community, our PTO, everyone is welcome to come to the schools. Each school will be hosting their walk. For the district kickoff, we'll be at Westfield, however, everyone will be doing the same thing. We have a list of our students that just, as the superintendent said, they just haven't shown up. So those will be priority, where we will be making those visits, as well as those students that had challenges with their attendance last year. We have little door hangers that we'll be leaving at the parents' homes if they're not there, but to focus on attendance, because it really does matter. Ultimately, a poor attendance is going to lead to potential dropouts. So your neighbors, bring them on over. They will go to each one of the campuses, they can sign in there, and the coordinator, the captain, will get you all set up, and you'll be partnered with someone from our school, one of our teachers, our counselors. You won't go alone as a volunteer, you'll always have someone with you, but really, it's knocking on those doors and letting our students know that we care and we want them back. We'll also be giving them opportunities that we have here in the district, whether it's our ASAP program, virtual learning, and our social workers will also have information in the packets for any social services that our students may need.
Thank you for that question, Trustee Bell, so they could clarify the locations for me.
Well, I want to congratulate all of our schools. We started on such a positive note this year with all of the gains that our district has done. Welcome to those of you that are new to Spring ISD. Congratulations to those of you that are taking on new roles. We've got some exciting things happening in spring right now, and it is just, it's so much fun to be able to share everything that's going on within our district and keep up the good work, and we've got some great things going on in spring right now. Thank you all and congratulations.
In my comments, I just wanted to salute our new police chief. I live in this area, I do my morning walk every morning, and I'm always be texting Dr. Watson saying, "Why these kids leaving school instead of going to school?" Because if a child's not in the classroom, the child's not learning. And now I do my morning walk, my morning exercise, I mean, it's clean. So Chief, what are we doing? Keep on doing it, we appreciate it, and not only, even on the other side of the street, but mainly on this area, why living Westfield side? The kids are going, they're going somewhere, they're not walking the streets, they're going back and forth to the store on the corner. And I want to highlight, make a comment, Mr. Mason is doing a call for me, I guess, once a week to all of us, and it's very detailed, and what's his name?
His newsletter. That is wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. We as the board appreciate that. I can say that safely.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to have some fun by attending Smith Elementary School on College Day. Every class represented a university. Every student had some type of college paraphernalia, whether it was a sign, T-shirts, letters. Mr. Bell and I were there to judge, and we couldn't judge because everything, what'd you say, Mr. Bell? Everything was so even, it was so wonderful, it was hard to judge. But the one thing I enjoyed was a rap or a song that was given, and I know some of you have heard it, but I know that Smith is probably engaging it for every class. But it said, "I'm gonna take my brain to the third grade hall. I'm gonna learn till I can't no more." Oh, they were beautiful. So Ms. Smith Elementary, we applaud you. I had an opportunity to see a couple of other schools. Students were dressed in their College Day paraphernalia. So Dr. Watson, I know we are encouraging our students how important education is. So thank you to our leaders. So our next item on our agenda has been implemented in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those are considered by the board. So Chief Hill, do we have anyone registered to participate under agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Okay. Then we will move to our next item, which is our Points of Pride Award. Tonight, we have three awards. So our Chief Communications Officer, Tiffany Dunn O'Neal.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, esteemed members of the board. We actually, we have three agenda items, but we have nine awards this evening. Eight individual and one team award, and so I'm gonna ask you to come down to the horseshoe So just as a reminder to everyone in the audience, as a longstanding tradition, our Points of Pride here in the district, and they only go to first, second, and third-place recognitions at the state level and/or national level recognition. So our first Point of Pride tonight goes to a member of the district's high school athletic team, who is no stranger to this audience. I'd like to call up Thomas Woods up to the podium, the head athletic trainer at Decane As our board and superintendent know, Thomas has walked the horseshoe before for professional awards. Tonight, Thomas is here with us to celebrate an award from NATA, the National Athletic Trainers Association's Research and Education Foundation. The foundation serves as NATA's philanthropic arm, and its volunteer service award is given to just one individual each year for supporting the foundation's mission and growth, and our very own Thomas Woods has received that award this year. Doc Woods, as he is known on campus, received this award for his ongoing commitment to athletic training profession and for his work to advance the safety and health of young athletes. Please, I'd like to ask everyone here, we're gonna have Thomas walk the horseshoe, we'd like to ask everyone to give him a big round of applause for this award. Next up, we have a set of awards honoring the work of Spring ISD Child Nutrition Department. At this time, I would like to ask the Child Nutrition Department to come on up and stand up here. We have three members with us this evening. We're gonna have you stand right here. So over the summer, the Texas Department of Health and Public Safety, the Department So, over the summer, the Texas Department of Agriculture once again awarded Spring ISD Best of the Bunch status in the annual Farm Fresh Challenge. The program encourages districts to source Texas grown ingredients and educate students about Texas agriculture. In fact, the Child Nutrition Department received not just the state level recognition over the summer, but national level recognition as well when the U.S. Department of Agriculture named Spring ISD one of only 66 silver award winners in the USDA's third annual Turn Up the Beat Contest. So, that's the first award, the Turn Up the Beat Contest. The contest recognizes outstanding summer meal program sponsors like Spring ISD, who serve high-quality meals that are appetizing, appealing, and wholesome. We know how important great leadership is in making awards like these possible. So, we're excited this evening to also be honoring Child Nutrition Director Shelley Copeland, who recently received the School Nutrition Association President's Award of Achievement. Shelley has spent the past year serving as the National Organization's State President representing Texas. She's doing great things in the world of child nutrition, and we're grateful to her for her contribution and passion. Join me in giving Shelley and our whole Child Nutrition team a big round of applause. Congratulations to them. And we're gonna have them walk the horseshoe. Mark's gonna come up for the photo too? Congratulations again to our Child Nutrition Department. I'm asking Mr. Miranda to stay up here and help me. Because this is, Mr. Miranda, this has two teams tonight receiving numerous awards. So, the next up is the Transportation Department, and we have numerous awards. So, finally this evening, we're gonna recognize our outstanding Spring ISD Transportation Department employees and to celebrate awards they received this summer. Before I call our recipients up though, I know we have quite a few Transportation Department team members. So, I'd just like if we could give all of them to stand up and give them a big round of applause for being here tonight. So, now I would like to call our six recipients up to the podium. Six recipients. Points of Pride recipients, like, up to the podium. We're gonna get you to stand right here. So, these are the folks who keep our district moving. Their work gets students to and from school safely day after day. And this summer, several transportation employees received kudos and certifications from the Texas Association of Public Transportation and the Texas Association of School Bus Technicians. First, the Texas Association of Public Transportation honored the following employees. And I'm gonna start with Triva Hocke was named Special Needs Driver of the Year. Can we get a bigger round? We also have, and I may not get this in the, Leah Shipman is named Operations Specialist of the Year. Can I get a big round of applause? And we have Anna Brownfield named Regular Driver of the Year. We have Patrick Shea named Technician of the Year. We have William Starmack, who received his Master Technician Certification. And last but not least, we have two awards remaining for one person. Michael Dour was named Supervisor of the Year, as well as received his Master of Technician Certification. A big congratulations. We're gonna ask you to wash, walk the horseshoe and a big round of applause, one more round of applause for our Transportation Department. And trustees, that concludes our Points of Prides for this evening. Thank you.
In case you didn't know by now, that is the fun, fun part of our meeting. We enjoy recognizing our employees with Points of Pride. Thank you, Chief Dunn O'Neal. Thank you. Our next, our next item is the discussion of the Spring High School Swimming Pool. So, at this time, I'd like to again recognize our superintendent of schools, Dr. Watson.
Thank you, President Newhouse and other trustees. So, over the past couple of weeks, we've had, actually for the past couple of months, we've had some correspondence coming in intermittently regarding the condition of the Spring High School pool. And so, it's something that we've been looking into and looking at. And so, we wanted to hear from our parents. So, last week, we had a parent meeting where parents were invited to come out, all of the parents that are, parents of students who swim at the pool at Spring. Some included some of our students and some included community members who also use the pool as well. And so, I'm gonna ask Chief Miranda to kind of give us an update of the meeting, as well as what we're planning to do is to come back to you all in October with three recommendations. And so, we wanted to get the parents' input. I'm asked to what they feel the condition of the pool is and what they were asking for in addition to receiving a safety audit, as well as what we believe that we can present to you all next month as a recommendation for next steps.
Yeah, thank you, President and Dr. Watson and board members. So, yeah, we met with the Spring Pool parents about a week ago. And it was a very positive meeting. It was Dr. Hina Hosen and I. And actually, Mr. Amendola was there. The principal was there as well. So, we had a really good meeting to discuss the condition of the pool. So, that's kind of the primary purpose of the meeting. We've had some indication from people questioning the condition of the pool. We've had a previous facility assessment before, but we came in and we did a facilities assessment of the pool just to kind of take a look at the condition of the pool itself, the building itself, and so forth. And our primary concern with it was just to make sure that the pool area was safe, right? And so, that was the first thing from a maintenance standpoint that we did. We didn't want to wait on anything from that standpoint. And so, we have gone in and made sure that all of the conditions of the pool in the area are safe. There were some things with electrical that we did. We most recently installed a new bulkhead that had some things going on with that. And so, we have corrected those items. We also corrected some drainage items. We actually had a diver go into the pool and correct some drainage issues that we had there. But as far as the meeting with the parents, it was a very positive meeting. The parents are very happy with the pool. They're happy, especially happy with the swim coach. They expressed that numerous times. You see Willie kind of chuckling over there. Really happy with the program that they have there. As you know, it's a very important year for them because it's an Olympic trials year. We do have some swimmers at the pool that are kind of aiming towards that. And so, we've actually recognized them here in the board meeting before. And so, they're very excited about what's happening in their spring swim season. And they didn't want anything to disrupt that. When we look at the pool facility itself, in order to do everything in our facilities assessment, we would have to make some really tough decisions about that pool area because anything that we begin to work on in that pool area is going to trigger even more work that would be required of us. And so, we wanted to have that really frank discussion with the swim parents. And the overwhelming feedback that we received from the parents was, "We're happy with the pool. We're happy with the season that we have. Please keep us in the pool. Please keep us here to be able to continue to have our season." And so, that's kind of where we are with that. The pool is safe. The water's safe. We don't have issues in that area. There are aesthetic things, and there are some other major issue in terms of equipment and different things that would have to happen. And there is a price tag for that and a long, a long construction period that that would take if that was one of the decisions we made going forward. And so, we talked to them about either doing something in that pool or maybe having a couple of other options that we could explore at a later date.
So, one of the things, as we know, when we talk with parents, the biggest concern was 17 months of closure.
Right.
Which means they would have to go to another school to use the pool during the Olympic trial time. And they were not, they were very adamant about, you know, wanting their pool to stay open. And so, of course, you know, one of our guiding principles is that we do what's best for students. And so, we are going to continue doing what's best for students. I've had on numerous occasions, opportunities to go over and look at the pool. Ms. Newhouse and I actually looked at the pool. And there were some things that need to be done in the restrooms. As we know, the pool was built in the early 70s. It was an outside pool that we put structures around it to make it an indoor pool. And so, we're really looking at what it would take to either fix those things over a 17-month period, seeing that it's still not gonna bring it up to a really new standard, or looking at other options. And so, right now, we're actually looking at other options to be able to bring to you all to determine whether or not we're going to recommend just fixing it or we're gonna recommend doing something different onsite there or something different. And so, we haven't finalized all of the numbers yet. And so, once Mark and our team pulls all that together, I'm at our November work session. We're gonna bring a presentation for you all to look at. When we talk with parents, we let parents know that we'd be back with them within 60 days or so. And so, there, that's November, but we want to bring something back in October so we can actually look at that. Okay? That's all that we have for that.
Thank you. At this time, board members, do you, anyone, does anyone have any questions?
Just for clarification, when is the season over?
The pool sea, they will tell you that it never ends, right? So, usually, I think it's in the spring, probably February, March, is when kind of the meat season is over, but they never stop swimming. And so, that's one of the issues that we'd be dealing with as well. The students, there were some students at our meeting, and they're very adamant about the fact that they never stop swimming because if they do, they'll begin to regress.
What are, what are some of our biggest risks?
So, I think the biggest risk have already been looked at in terms of electrical work that needs to happen. There was a bulkhead when we walked through, which is the wood part that goes across the pool that's already been rebuilt and replaced. I think you all just did that this past week.
This past weekend.
There's been some painting and things that have happened over the summer. The issue is that the building is old. I mean, the pool area is old. And so, if you go into the locker rooms, they don't look very appealing at all because it's a very old building. And so, as Mark indicated, to go in there and to do the pool work by draining the whole pool, going through and replastering or redoing the bottom, it's gonna take some time. And so, the time is what the concern was with that. The other issue is that, you know, when we start looking at the amount of money that it's gonna cost to not even bring it up to a newer-looking pool, the question that we'll be asking as we're looking at now is, is it worth putting millions of dollars into that when we also know there's issues and structural things in spring that needs to be fixed as well? That we have over 2,800 students in as well. And so, we're really looking at all of the things that come back and bring you all a well-rounded, thought-through recommendation so you all have all the information to help make the decision as to what's next. There's, as you know, we're building a new ninth-grade center over there. So, there's other options and things that we can think about doing as we're in the construction phase of that as well. But we're looking at all of those options to determine what's feasible. Then, of course, we have Ms. Westbrook's in there as well that's keeping our dreams to a, to a reality as well as it relates to funding for all of that as well. And so, one of the things that we know that you all do a great job of is being great stewards of the finances. And so, we don't want to waste money into something that may not be there or something's different long-term. And so, we want to just come back to you with all that information.
Chief Miranda mentioned a couple of needs assessments that were done.
Yeah, so, there was a recent needs assessment done. We had a third party come out and do an assessment.
Would it be possible for us to?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We'll get that put in the board update for you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you all for taking the time to visit with the parents and the students. And I think that's, it's a big step is, they feel like they've been heard and their concerns are being looked at. So, thank you all for doing that because that means a lot, I think, to our community that we're out there, you know, listening to their concern.
Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing for the 2019-2020 Spring Independent School District Campus Improvement Plans. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief of School Leadership and Student Support Services, Dr. Lupita Hina Hosen.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. Last Thursday, we had the opportunity to, or you all had the opportunity with that little jump drive. I hope you took some time to review the campus improvement plan. So, we went through, just informing you and about the process of the campus improvement plan and how the principals have worked with their campus advisory committee to not only evaluate the status of their building, but also to create these campus improvement plans. And ultimately, as the board, you will be approving the campus improvement plans. It is a public hearing, and we do have the opportunity, if there's anyone that has signed up, to speak to any of the campus improvement plans or to speak to this item.
Ms. Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak on this item under public hearing?
No, Madam President, we do not.
As there are no identified speakers, let us continue with tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse.
Board, I would like to entertain a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the 2019-2020 Spring Independent School District Campus Improvement Plans as presented by the administration.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the 2019-2020 Spring Independent School District Campus Improvement Plans as presented by the administration.
Second. It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees approve the 2019-2020 Spring Independent School District Campus Improvement Plans as presented by the administration. Is there any discussion?
I just want to comment that we had an opportunity to speak with the campuses on Thursday night. And I'm excited about the plans, and I'm looking forward to the results. Thursday night, and I'm excited about the plans, and I'm looking forward to the results that we'll see, that I know will yield from all of their hard work, so, thank you.
And again, thank you to those schools for providing us with the campus jump drive that told us about their campus improvement plan. So I know if anyone is interested in seeing any particular campus, they will be happy to share that jump drive with you.
And Ms. Newhouse, all the campus improvement plans now, once you approve them, they are posted on the website, on the front page of each campus. You'll be able to see them, or our parents and communities can see them.
Good. Thank you, thank you. So, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. So thank you to our administrators. I know, I see a couple of you saying, "We got that approved, we got that over with."
No one got called out.
Thank you, you all did a wonderful job on those, thank you. Our next item is the consent agenda. I will now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Winford Adams Jr., and seconded by Jana Gonzalez, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next is the public participation portion of our meeting. Chief Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak under public participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Seeing as how we have no registered speakers at this time, the board will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized, Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee, Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.076, to consider the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. The time is now 7:55 PM.
I'm just doing my business.
We will now reconvene and resume the work session of the Board of Trustees.
Work session?
Work session.
Board meeting.
I mean, the, oh, thank you. Resume this Board of Trustees meeting. The time is now 8:48 PM. We'll address items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Madam President, I move the board render a final order to terminate the contract of Amber Kelly and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employee of the action taken by the board.
It's been moved by Jana Gonzalez, second by Deborah, by Justine Durant, that the board render a final order to terminate the contract of Amber Kelly and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employee of the action taken by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contract of Jonathan Lee upon a finding that the employee failed to perform his contract without good cause, and authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employee of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. I further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board of Educator Certification that the employee failed to perform his contract without good cause and of the action taken by the board.
Do we have a second? It's been moved by Winford Adams, second by Justine Durant, that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to terminate the contract of Jonathan Lee, and upon finding that the employee failed to perform his due contract without good cause, authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the employee of the proposed termination pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. Further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify the State Board of Educator Certification that the employee failed to perform their contract without good cause and of the action taken by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the term contract of the following employee, Manny Milton, Milton, Millen, as presented in closed session, and to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the board's action and his rights pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, second by Winford Adams Jr., that the board approve the superintendent's recommendation to propose the termination of the term contract of Manny Milton as presented in closed session to authorize the superintendent or designee to provide the employee notice of the board's action and his rights pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code.
Before the board votes...
Manny Mylan.
Thank you.
Manny Mylan.
I wanted to clarify the employees.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board declare the contract of Michelle Charras to be void pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code, and approve the termination of her employment with Spring ISD effective immediately. I further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify this employee of the action taken by the board.
Do we have a second? It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Chris Bell, that the board declare the contract of Michelle Charras to be void pursuant to the Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code, and approve the termination of her employment with Spring ISD effective immediately. I further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designee to notify this employee of the action taken by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Any other motions? There are no other motions, there are no other items on tonight's agenda, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam President, I'm, motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. It's been moved by Jana Gonzalez, second by Justine Durant, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, the motion carries unanimous. There's no further business, the meeting is officially adjourned at 8:53 PM.